Good to go.
Good evening. Want to welcome everybody. This is a regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee, County of Cocheeze, State of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, at 7:00 PM on our council chambers here in Bisbee, Arizona. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Is not here yet. Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Joanie Jacomino is excused, and Councilmember Frank Davis is also excused. Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mal Sued.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Joelle Landers, Personnel Director, Matt Gurney, Public Works Director, Alder B. Chauvet, Police Chief, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
Thank you. For a moment of reflection tonight, I just want to bring up that we just celebrated June 13th, and I just wanted us to take a moment to think about racial justice, and hopefully our country is moving forward on that. Seems like we have some problem, but that's all it takes a thought to work through. Racial justice that we want in our country. Thank you. Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the visible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, well, remember, we've now crossed the summer solstice, so I don't have to worry. Okay. Uh, moving forward, um, for, uh, some announcements, uh, we have some awards to give out. I just want to remind and, and let everybody know about our July 4th festivities that we're, uh, we're coming back. We're gonna have our, uh, grilling and, uh, and mucking contests, coaster races, and of course, uh, everything going on and down in Worm with the spray, and then with this great rain, we shouldn't have much of a problem with our fireworks. So, uh, we got it, that was been delivered and there in the station, and we, uh, we're looking forward to that. So, so for now, there's some, there is a very important award, uh, probably somebody I just can't believe's been here as long. It seems like just yesterday. I, I've only been here since 07, but I would like to, uh, bring up, um, Joelle, who has the, there she is, that has the, uh, award for tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am privileged this evening, um, to present a plaque to Martha Elkins, and the Black State's, the City of Bisbee honors Martha Elkins. May you be proud of the work you have done, the person you are, and the difference you've made, and happy retirement. And it has years 1992 to 2022. Congratulations.
Murphy, you didn't want to say anything? Please.
Everybody here knows my story, I'm sure. It's been an incredible life. I wouldn't change it, though. I loved it. Um, created a very big family. I'll never forget any of you, because I love you guys very much. Special thanks to the chief. He's been here for me the last decent years that I've gone through a lot. He's been here. And Julie too, I hear, also has Julie in my box. Thank you very much.
Chief, would you like to say something, please? Happy Grays.
So, uh, Martha actually started with the City of Bisbee in, uh, 1979, uh, with the Bisbee Police Department. And she went on to work for, uh, many years, uh, here, until she left us for a very short time to go to the, uh, court. She was gone for a short time because she came back part-time, uh, to be continuing her dispatching services, uh, that was in 92, uh, and she's been with us ever since. And in reality, she never left. Uh, she was married to the, to the chief at that time, and so her service, even though she wasn't employed for a short time, her service was still felt, and she was still for sure a member of this department, and has been ever since 1979. And I am grateful, uh, for her years of service, uh, for her friendship, and for her, um, uh, well, just for her in general. I'm grateful, and thank you very much. Love you. I would also like to, uh, um, I'd like to call Sergeant Reynolds, uh, ask him to come up. As, as many of you are aware, uh, we had a pretty bad, bad fire here in Bisbee back in April, uh, and it, it claimed, uh, four properties, uh, in the Bisbee area. And, uh, we were very, very fortunate that it didn't claim anybody's lives. And, uh, it almost did, uh, because of some, uh, some good spirited neighbors, uh, some passersby's, and, and, uh, and two of my police officers, in fact, I was having a officer, Mendoza stepped up here as well. Because of the two of them and their, their willingness, uh, to put themselves in harm's way, uh, for the good of somebody else. Uh, and, and in two of these cases, somebody else that they hadn't, they didn't know who was. Uh, they put their own lives in harm, uh, for the good of somebody else. And that is a, uh, that is a testament, I think, of... Police officers and firefighters are often called to do dangerous things. Uh, we're often called to do things that people, other people don't want to do. Not, we are not always tested the way that these people were tested. And, and I pray, and I'm grateful that in 24 years, I was never tested in that, in that manner. But they were, and they rose to that, they rose to that occasion, and they acted, uh, appropriately, and in my opinion, uh, you're wrong. And so, I'm gonna ask Sergeant Reynolds to step up here just to say a few short words, and, um, uh, about that day.
Thanks, Chief. Hello, Sergeant Carlos Reynolds, Bisbee Police Department. It was April 22nd, and that won't be too long on this, uh, we were dispatched out to what I thought was a barbecue fire. Came around the corner and found a, uh, house falling in gold. This house, however, was, was a little different. It's my son's grandma's house. That was my son's grandma's house. I knew she was there. And, uh, thank God of all days, uh, firefighter Andres Escondio, thank God was coming from class and service. He, of all people, I, I couldn't believe, and I'm not sure if it was due to the high winds, I don't know if anybody remembers that day, it was 40, 50 mile an hour winds, that he was the only one to see this fire because it was so big. When I, he was there on scene, I came on scene, Officer Mendoza came on scene, and I was just, it was scary. Like I said, it's my son's grandma's, and I, so I took it like very personal, immediately got with Andres. Officer Mendoza went to the left of me towards, uh, B Street Park there, and due to the high winds and the fire, I couldn't hear nothing. I couldn't hear nothing. I was trying to talk to Andres, what happened? It was this fast, uh, even from where we were at, we, we felt the heat. Something had come over the radio, and I still don't even know what it was. Thank God of all days, Officer Mendoza, she's been with us for a year and a half? Year and a half. All right, one of the youngest of the crew right now. A year and a half, I'm 13 years, and, and this young lady amazed me that day, because for two seconds, I knew we had to go, we had to do something because I knew Mrs. Vazquez was in there. I looked over at Mendoza, I couldn't hear what was going on because it was so loud, I couldn't even hear Andres talking to me on this side. I looked at Mendoza, and I seen her face, and then I just seen her run. I seen her run dead into the fire, and I knew something was wrong. I was like, I heard something with the backyard, and then that's when I ran with her, and me and Andres ran over there. Uh, as we came around the corner, Officer Mendoza immediately, uh, was grabbing the, the metal fence with metal poles, and it was sturdy, and, and, and it couldn't be moved. We came around the corner, Andres came around the corner, we had Officer Beal come around the other side, and start cleaning up the houses over there. It was so hot. I, I had my vest on, and i- it was really hot. At that time, uh, the fence was from here to right here, this was the house. I mean, this is the, we had this much room. The fire was right here, and it was hot. I just remember, we went in, and of all people, thank God, Alma, which was the daughter, uh, to, to Ms. Vazquez, was just hugging her, just hugging her and taking the blunt of the heat. And Ms., Ms., uh, Ms. Vazquez, gosh, she must be almost 85, 99, um, and she just held her. And I just knew we had to move. I didn't have to tell anything to Officer Mendoza. She started grabbing the fence. I know she burned her hand. I came around the other side, uh, Andres came through here, and then Dina Galvano, who was in some, in some shorts and summer gear, and she stepped in there too. And thank God of all days, I, I just remember my back was burning, and I was this way, Officer Mendoza, Andres were behind me towards the fire, and I just remember, I was like, oh my God, this hurts. And, uh, we were able to thank God, we, we ripped that fence, uh, out of, and I still don't know how, because that, that thing was, it was hard, it was hard. And I knew we had to move quick because the car beside us blew up. We moved the fence, uh, Mendoza, Andres, Dina, we all just, we grabbed Mrs. Chona, we grabbed Alma, and we were ready to pull her out. That day, like I said, it was very personal because I knew it was my son's grandma, and I think if it were 30 seconds more, I don't think they would have made it. If it wasn't for Officer Mendoza, when I looked at her, I seen her face, and she didn't yell at me, she, she just ran. She reacted, and she ran, and she threw herself in, and I was, after it was all done, the dragon was gone, I was so proud and happy, thank God, because Chona lived. Alma burnt, Alma got some good burns on her back from that day. Uh, I was a little red, Officer Mendoza burned her hand, uh, Andres, again, I don't know exactly, because again, we all kind of separated at the end, and pulled everybody out. But, uh, a year and a half in, Officer Mendoza was with us, is with us, and thank God that day, I'll never forget her because of what she did, because thank God I looked at her, and that's when it all started. So, uh, we put in for these, uh, these awards that were with the chief, and said, hey, this, this, this meant something. And thank God shortly after that, Bisbee made a busy fire ride, and, uh, well, they were able to get finding the fires down. But I would love, uh, for you guys to recognize Officer Mendoza for what she did. She, she, it was amazing. It was amazing, so, um, thank you, because that's, that was, it was my son's grandma. So, it's the water, like, it was hot, and they wouldn't have made it. That's why this was so important to me. Thank you.
Come on up, please.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just gonna read what the, the plaque says. Life-saving award presented to Officer Esmeralda Mendoza. In recognition for your courageous and life-saving actions at the scene of a structured fire on August 22nd, 2022, in Bisbee, Arizona. You put yourself in harm's way to save another human life with dedication and courage. Bisbee Police Department, April 22nd, 2022. And, uh, we have another award here for Sergeant Carlos Reynolds for his actions that day as well, because they were equally, uh, heroic, um...
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Those two people that couldn't make it, uh, we were hoping...
We also have plaques to, to give, uh, life-saving awards, uh, to firefighter Andres, Andres Escodillo, uh, he's a Douglas firefighter, uh, who happened to be passing by and stopped and helped, and Bisbee resident Dina Galvano. Uh, these plaques say, uh, uh, much like the other, in recognition for your courageous and life-saving, uh, actions at the scene of a structured fire on August 22nd, 2022, in Bisbee, Arizona. You put yourself in harm's way to save another human life with dedication and courage. Um, these were awards, um, they were not able to be here today, these awards will be given to them, uh, at a later date, but I wanted to make sure that for our audience, uh, Facebook, uh, for, and that they were mentioned here today, right now, in front of Mayor and Council. And it, and it goes without saying, but it goes without saying too much, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, it needs to be addressed as well, for the fact that that was one of the worst days, um, I have ever experienced as, as in public safety in Bisbee, Arizona. And it could have been so much worse in so many ways. We were so fortunate to have the men and women who work for this city that we have, and that includes the Police Department and the Fire Department. We, we lost four properties. It's amazing that we didn't lose that entire neighborhood. That was like, that, that was like a war zone, and it was like nothing I've ever seen before. And great recognition should be given to every single person that was there, that put themselves in danger to extinguish those fires and to save everybody else's properties and houses. And so I thank my officers who were there, and I also thank the Bisbee Fire Department and all of them who were there, who, who do that job every single day and do it, um, right. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone. I mean, what else can be said, but this is what the dedication of our employees, what it shows, the 40 some odd years, some of the dedication of the city and, and the work that they do, uh, to protect all of us. So, again, just, um, very heart, warm thanks for everything. All right. We'll move on from that and move to, we have one call to the public. It's like no one's here again. Go ahead.
So, you guys are busy giving yourself awards. God had got it. Well, he attacked me because I had this video camera right here, not this same one. So it doesn't make much sense, you know? Everybody at home, don't believe me, don't believe the public, because that's what it is. Last week, I was up here trying to speak, and I was making a very serious speak, and I was rudely interrupted by City Attorney Joe Estes. And, uh, him and Ken, uh, excuse me, you're making a state law?
Violating the state statute.
Which one is that?
Which you give.
Which one, which state statute did I violate?
Statute was, you cannot use city resources for an election violation.
What, what city resources do you use?
This is called public, we don't answer questions.
Everybody, look what they're doing.
That's right. We're reliving by the laws, and I would think that's important.
What resource, what city resource did I use?
Take it up with the Attorney General's office if you have a complaint. Feel free, you know how to do it.
Everybody, there's a really important election in August, um...
Sorry, you can't talk about the election. This is a city building, you're using city resources, it's a, it's a state law. If you do that, I'm just gonna, or you shut your mark, my thought.
Okay, here, here's a fact. You're, are supposed to allow citizens two meetings to express their opinions about this situation, right?
Not at Call of the Public.
Not at Call of the Public. Anyway, the police are, the police are giving themselves awards. Ask yourself, what is it that they don't want me to tell you? What is it that this governing body here doesn't want you to know? What is it that they're so scared of me to say? That they haven't been using public funds in a good way, because they haven't? That the Police Department is the most expensive part of the general fund, because it is? How much money does the animal shelter get from this governing body right here? Not much, from what I understand. In my opinion, the city has been wasting money, and they're trying to come up with all sorts of lies, and I don't believe them at all.
Thank you, time's up. All right, moving on to general business. We are, and accounts payable, I have a motion for accounts payable, please.
I move to be paid accounts payable in the amount of $383,000, $369.69. Second?
We have a motion, it's a second, to pay accounts payable, uh, question, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Page nine. Advertising, High Desert Sign Company, uh, 1,000, 1,286.90 cents. Just, what, what advertising is that for?
Um, we made some new signs up at the Queen Mine Tour, uh, since we reestablished the, uh, visitor center at that location a couple months ago. Uh, we put two new signs up on that building, uh, to make sure people know where the visitor center is.
Okay, so this is direction to the visitor center at the mine, at the mine?
That's at the Mine Tour, correct.
Easy today.
Any other questions? We have a motion, a second to approve accounts payable, amount of $383,369.69. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes. Yes, we, five zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have items A through G, uh, approval of minutes, uh, park and sale, the use permit for some of the 4th of July, and we have four more applications for extension of premises for Electric Brewing. I'm gonna pull items B and through G, so B, E, F, and G, so, I have a motion. Uh, anybody else have anything else to pull up, sorry?
Did you say B, E?
D, E, F, and G. Anybody else? Anybody want to pull A through C?
We'll, we'll send this back to last, uh, to...
We'll get to that. You have anything, you want A, B to pull? I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through C. I'll make that motion. A motion, a second to approve it. Consent agenda has listed items A, B, and C. All who's in favor, just give a sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? The ayes have it, so move. So, on motions D, E, F, and G, we received a letter again today, and actually, a, a video. Uh, we sent a letter to Electric Brewing about what we'd like them to do to try to control noise out of their area. Apparently, they just had a concert again this, uh, this last weekend, which, by the pictures that were shown to me, they did not do what we asked them to do. So my recommendation here is, we do not approve these until he comes before us and tells us what he needs to do, what he's going to do to help alleviate the problems in the neighborhood. I'm not gonna continue to approve these if he doesn't live by all the gas. That's my opinion. Up for discussion for items D through G.
We agree with you.
They all agree.
Okay, so I'm gonna instruct the, I'm gonna pull these items and not consider them for approval this time, and ask the city clerk to send these to the applicant, a letter that says, we need either them to show up personally to get these approved and appear before us to tell us if he wants to, uh, to continue this type of extension of premise, which is basically running his business outside, um, what we can do to help, uh, help make this tolerable for, uh, for himself and also the neighbors. All right.
And just a note for the record.
Yeah.
Um, the, he can appear at the next council meeting and still get in ahead of his permits.
Yes, yeah, we're not denying anything that we haven't already, that can't be approved, July 10th is the first one he wants on this one. Okay, sure.
This sets a precedence. So, if, I know the other type of businesses are there, but if all additional businesses start asking permits to have extensions out into the parking lot, and we have approved reason to pass, does it set a precedence that anybody can do that?
Well, there's, there is a legal ability to do that now. We've done that many times for other, but not on a constant, every weekend basis. So this is a little bit different in my estimation than what we've done for other, um, you know, top of Queen Hotel, other ones that have extended for a special event or something like that. In my opinion, honest, as City Attorney, it's really up to us, it's not any kind of precedent, we're just, we can decide whether we want to do it or not. It's not that somebody can come back and say, we did it for him, and he didn't do it for me.
I was, I was thinking more in the San Jose area. That complex, we have the bar and other businesses, and then if you go rescue back, then the other business is the...
Legion.
Legion. So if any other, I was just concerned that we should be aware that if any other business even shows up, a new business comes, this sets a precedent of that.
Yeah, I don't think it's a precedence in rules, in any different rule and regulations. It's just, this is what we've allowed to happen, and, uh, we're taking action now to try to alleviate some of the problems, and, and what we're doing is living by code. The code says, if you're going to do this, you have to direct the speakers towards yourself, not away from you, and so on and so forth. Exactly what we asked for in the letters that we sent to them. Any other opinion of this process?
Yeah, and just to clarify, it doesn't set a, a legal precedent where if you approve it for one, you have to approve it for all, because each one of these is, is unique and different, and reviewed on an individual basis to determine whether or not they even have the capacity or the ability to do this type of activity. What you do want to watch is when you have a situation like this where it's an application for every single weekend, as opposed to what was intended, which was, you know, every once in a while, special event kind of thing. And that's something that, if it does become an issue, does become a, a concern, we can address that through a potential code clarification to, uh, to address any types of, where we, you know, overuse or abuse of the process. But I know that these really became really popular because of COVID and being able to, to do business and have business set up outside where it was, was a safer environment. Now that, you know, we're, we're through that, I think a, a lot of businesses are still, they, they got used to that, that extra space kind of thing, and, you know, so it's, it's a, it's a balance act, because you want to promote your businesses and, and have them be successful and, and be good businesses, but you also need to, you know, take into consideration... but you also need to, you know, take into consideration the impact it has on the next door neighbors and the residents and things like that, so.
The idea is to try to let him, allow him to do that if he can control the situation. And I'm perfectly fine if they do it and there isn't much of a problem, but once it's a continuing problem, then we need to. Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Also, this is in conjunction with Arizona liquor law. So, you notice on the application forms, so this is an outgrowth of the liquor law. So, it would be a different situation if it was a party outside not serving liquor.
All right, we have no old business, so tonight we'll move on to new business. This will be item number three. Item three is discussion of possible approval of an update library collection development policy to include a section on the controversial materials and reconsideration of procedures. This is our library director, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so what I have before you tonight, it's an updated collection development policy that does include controversy materials and reconsideration procedures. And this is really just due to recent book challenges around the country. The Copper Queen Library staff and the library advisory board wanted to make sure that we had something in place just to provide a pathway in case someone were to question a book that's held either at the Minne Library in Old Bisbee or the Copper Queen Library and it's in San Jose. And so, the library advisory board passed this, included in on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. And just a little general information about what is a collection development policy. And basically, it's just, it's a document that outlines how a particular institution, in our case, a library, acquires and disposes of library materials. So, you can, you know, we look at our library collection as a living, changing entity. And because the library strives to present a wide variety of viewpoints, some materials may be considered offensive to library users or groups. And that's what we would consider controversial materials. So, just for the record, the Copper Queen Library does not promote or endorse any particular viewpoint represented in our collection, but rather, we provide a variety of resources that people can freely examine on their own and make their own decisions. So, we look at as the choice of library materials by a user, it's an individual matter. And in terms of our youth patrons, the responsibility for the selection of reading and viewing material for children and adolescents that rests with their parents or their legal guardians, who do sign our applications upon registration, so when they get their library card. And just an overview of the reconsideration process. You know, while one library patron may reject materials for themselves or their families, they may not restrict access to materials by others. However, that being said, we do recognize the right of individuals to question materials in our library. And so, this process outlines what they would do if they found themselves in that position. So, basically, if a patron would formally like to question something that's in our library, they would fill out the new request for reconsideration of library materials formed. And after receiving that, the library manager would have the library advisory board evaluate the particular, the title in question. And then, the library advisory board would send their evaluations to the library manager, who would then make a decision on the item. And then, the individual who is not satisfied with that, they may appeal that to, and I think we just had the city of Bisbee, but that would be to the city manager, since they are above the library manager. And that's basically the, that's basically what we're looking at. And if you have any questions, I would love to answer them.
Questions, Jason?
Jason does a good job. He always has his everything in order. Just want to make sure.
I tried.
I tried, there's nothing I could ask.
No, it's, this is something, it's kind of going around the country. I'm glad we're in Toronto, but not in that bind, so.
Right.
Just having something in place.
Yes.
Not the rules, then you'd be in trouble. Hey. I'll entertain a motion then. I know, approve the questions and discussion.
I move to approve the updated library collection development policy to include a section of controversial materials and reconsideration of material.
Second?
We have a motion second for item number three. Approve the updated library collection development policy. All those in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Both nay? Said the ayes have it, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, slide number four. This will be discussion of possible approval of resolution R dash twenty-two dash twelve. It's a resolution of the mayor and council, City of Bisbee, County of Fort Hughes. Fixing, levying, and assessing the amount to be raised by the City of Bisbee from property taxation and fixation and determining the top property tax rate for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year and providing for severability. Harry, our finance director.
Mayor and Council, this is the resolution to approve the new tax rate for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, raising it by the maximum amount allowed for the year, which will raise an additional twenty-three thousand, nine eighty-three in property tax revenue. And this was approved with the, well, it was approved on the budget.
Right, we have, are we carrying on this? Any questions about our financial?
What? Okay, I have a couple of questions. What did it go from? When you say, what it says, three dollars and six cents per hundred, what was it before? So, where we coming from to what? What was the number before this?
I can bring that paperwork with me.
I can bring it up.
It raised it two percent, so it was a two percent increase. It was. And I attached all the tax levy information.
Okay, maybe you'll send it to us.
It was in our last, when you were, maybe last week, two weeks ago, it was all that.
Oh, yeah, all that was in the last.
I can bring it up on my computer.
My second question. Why are we doing this? Because, let me make it simple and avoid questioning this. The values of property has gone up, so technically, we're going to be, we're going to be getting more based on the prices that have gone up in the recent years. So, the property value by itself, it's gone up. So, as a total amount we collecting is going to be higher than we've had in the past. So, why are we, in addition to the, because if I had a hundred thousand dollars home, now maybe the value has gone up to a hundred and fifty, so you're going to be collecting under one fifty. Why are we increasing the percentage? Because you're going to be making money without having to go with this.
We raise it by the maximum amount every year, just so we don't get behind. You know, we're allowing to raise it by the two percent every year, so we just take that option.
Automatically?
It's raising twenty-three thousand dollars, so without it, what, I don't know what the increase would be, maybe ten thousand. You know, it's twenty-three thousand dollars added to the general fund.
I understand, it's not about twenty-three thousand. The question that someone will ask is, why are we, we're going to increase? I mean, you know, it adds up and comes to six dollars. Someone may say, just six dollars for a hundred thousand. But the value of homes have gone up, so you're going to get more money. You're going to get the additional, you probably get more than twenty-three thousand. So, you're getting the additional value has gone up and you're raising the maximum. I don't know what was the thought process and?
The calculation is based on the assessed property values given to us by the county. So, they've already included that increase in assessed values when we come up with these numbers.
Mr. Mayor? Just in partial answer to the question, Mel, it's not automatic, okay? Our property tax receipts don't go up automatically with an increase in values. They go up through a process, exactly what you're doing tonight.
So, you don't look at the value, the market value, just based on?
Well, it's the market value according to the county assessor who gives that number to us.
Okay.
And then, this process takes place. So, it has to go through the process of the city. It doesn't go up automatically just because of inflation or increase in property values. You're doing that right now.
Okay, so, yeah, okay.
Otherwise, it wouldn't go.
Is that just automatic?
Right, now, one other thing that you have to keep in mind, and a lot of cities have gotten caught in this trap over the years. A number of years ago, you know, our friends in the state legislature, as they often do, passed legislation that more or less hogtied us into the point where if we lower our property tax rate or we don't increase our property tax rate in a given year or a given set of years, there's no catching up, okay? We are not allowed, let's say, we go five years without a property tax increase and then, all of a sudden, we're in a bind financially and we need to increase our tax. We can still only go two percent.
The maximum?
Two percent more than what we're already collecting. So, in a year like this, okay, where right now, the annual rate of inflation is something close to ten percent, okay? Your increase in your property taxes, two percent, okay? So, you're already behind, you're already behind the curve. And yet, if you don't do it on an annual basis, or at least consider it, you will fall farther and farther behind as time goes on.
You can't get four percent?
I understand this, Stephen, believe me, I know what you're saying. You're just assessing now, maybe not, you just explained. So, basically, I just to make it simple, so people understand. My house was assessed last year at a hundred thousand. Is this year going to be assessed at just a hundred thousand and I'm increasing it to two percent? Or is going to, the market value is going to play a role in the value of the house?
What we know is that your tax on the city portion of your property tax, okay? The rest of it is not up to us. Just the part that goes to the city.
To the city of Bisbee.
Will go up two percent.
Two percent.
So, if it's a hundred thousand, then it's going to be six bucks.
If it's a hundred and fifty, it's going to be eight dollars. And the, okay. And the hundred, so, again, I'm not getting an answer on this. So, basically, last year, my house was assessed at a hundred. Based on the new market value, it may be assessed at a hundred and fifty. Am I right? It's not going to be six dollars, it's going to be eight dollars.
Okay.
Am I right?
And then, we're going to add your house up with all of the other properties in Bisbee and that's going to be the gross value of all property in Bisbee according to the county assessor.
The county, not to the city.
Yeah, the county assessor will calculate that new value and then they'll transmit it to us eventually.
Can we do two percent on that?
That's correct. There is one exception, and that's the cost of new construction.
We get that on that.
So, just, and you will get me the number, so it's six dollars on a hundred thousand and it used to be, what? Last time, two, four dollars, five dollars?
It was five point six something.
Okay, all right. Okay.
One thing to consider, right now, we're in the rising house prices.
Yeah.
I was here in two thousand seven, eight, when they went like that. And so, you get behind the curve then, and we're actually, you know, all our boats are floating a little hotter now. Back then, it was like, wow, how are we going to make it up? Anyway, it's, it's.
And just the last question on this. So, the twenty-three thousand dollars that technically or approximately we're going to be collecting, it will go to the general fund to help offset rising general fund expenses. Can you give us? What expenses? Can you give just an example, so people will understand what expenses you're talking about or just?
It was built into, it was built into our budget.
I understand, but I just.
Even health insurance.
Wages and benefits.
The what?
Biggest part of it is wages and benefits.
Wages and, okay.
Which we do know are going.
Which we decided to do. Okay, so it's good to know, so people will know what we're doing, okay?
Everything except the insurance.
I know, I just saw, I was going to question you.
You got cut.
But I looked at him, you know, he just looked so nice today and then I said.
But he's always helping.
And our rate, okay?
All right, thank you, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion for item four.
I move to approve resolution R dash twenty-two dash twelve. Fixing, levying, and assessing the amount to be raised by the City of Bisbee from property taxation and fixing and determining the property tax rate for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year in the amount of three dollars and six point. Assuming per one hundred of assessed valuation and providing for severability.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second for item four for resolution R dash twenty-two dash twelve. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suede?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes, five zero. Thank you. Moving on, item five. This will be discussion of possible approval of the PSPRS pension funding policy. It's all repeated. Go ahead, Carrie, I know.
This is the policy that PSPRS requires all the governing bodies to do by July first is to explain how we plan to pay off the unfunded pension liability. So, the majority of it was paid with a bond sale. There's about seven hundred and fifty thousand left, which we put in the pension policy that we plan to pay off over the next couple fiscal years, five twenty, twenty-four. So, we just send this policy to the PSPRS after it's approved.
This is a law that we passed up there saying we got to let them know. And previously, it was always, well, we'll just kick the can and wait and pay the minimum for the next four years. So, now, we actually get to say we're going to tackle a little bit we have left. Like, that's not a little bit, seven hundred and fifty, but still, a little compared to what we had. So, I'm very pleased that we're, we're going to try to tackle this and get this done in the next two years. Then we, we'll have, we won't have to file this, but we won't have an unfunded liability. Questions besides what I just spoke to? Everybody understand what we're doing? Unless, you want to say how we're getting there or anything else?
I, you know, I think I kind of alluded to it two weeks ago when we were talking about the same issue, not this policy, but the same issue. We, with seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars left in unfunded liability, I think, you know, we're stating that we won't be able to pay that off in two years. But quite frankly, what I'd like to do is I'd like to pay it off in one year if I can. And there's basically three ways I think we can do that together, three ways I think we can do that. As you read your financial report that you got earlier this week or last week, I'm sorry. We anticipate ending the year with a surplus in terms of revenues over expenses. At the appropriate time that we've got the books closed and we know pretty much what that number is, I would like to take a portion of that money and I'd like to just send it up to PSPRS and start paying it down in chunks. Along the way, during the year, the contribution rate that has now been established for the next twelve months will be contributing to another chunk of that remaining unfunded liability. And then, when we get to the end of the fiscal year, about a year from today, we're going to quite probably be looking at money not spent that has been budgeted in the amount of about three hundred thousand dollars based on what we would have been spending if we had not refinanced the debt, okay? So, there's those three avenues. Okay, so there's those three avenues there, that I think will, by this time next year, enable us to go ahead and pay off that remaining unfunded liability. And then, actually, your contribution rate for the fiscal year of '23, '24 will actually go down again, because then there will be zero unfunded liability. But we'll never have to be able to forget that we still have debt to pay. But at least that debt will be on a straight line for the next 25 or so years. And I don't think, as wild as my imagination is, I don't see myself here in 25 years. And so, hopefully, it'll be, it'll be up to, it will be up to those who follow to determine if we can cut that 25 years down to 20, or 21, or 22 years. And I think, because we have, on the tax renewal that we got coming up in November, that will be generating money that will help us not only pay the debt, but also to build a surplus, excuse me, what do we call it, Mayor?
Contingency.
Contingency fund, just in case there's any really bad years, and we end up any of the year with some unfunded liability, we can nip it in the bud before it starts to grow like it did before. So I think we're in a really, really good place now, to be in good shape, start restoring some of the tax revenues that come into the general fund for something other than paying off, or contributing to an ever-growing burden of PSPRS debt. I think those days are over.
Okay, that was a great explanation. Any other questions or comments? Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the PSPRS pension funding policy. I have a motion and a second to approve the PSPRS pension funding policy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Chair says the ayes have it, so move. Okay, push to item six. This will be discussion of possible approval of the Contract for Publishing Services Official Newspaper Record with the Bisbee Observer. Pretty simple, yeah?
Pretty simple, every year, we have to designate a newspaper record. We went out to bid and only received one back, as we normally do, from Bisbee Observer. There was a slight increase, and it's $4.65 per column.
Questions, comments?
Is it slight increase from what? It's 4.65, how much was it before?
It was 4.50.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Contract for Publishing Services Official Newspaper Record with the Bisbee Observer.
Second.
And a motion, second, item number six, to approve the contract with the Bisbee Observer as our official newspaper of record. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Chair says the ayes have it, so move. Item number seven. This will be discussion of possible approval of the request for proposal for the purchase of a 10-foot dump trailer for the Parks Department. Matt, I'll be going to that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the Parks Department has been using, for many years, just a pickup truck for collecting trash, and even hauling rock for different projects. And that is very time-consuming, and not a good use of time, of their time. So, we're asking the, to purchase, or to go up to bid for, to purchase a 10-foot dump trailer for that department, and that will be for, like I said, doing trash, the trash runs that they have to do for the parks, all the parks that we have, and then also for any small projects that they have to upkeep and maintain, and help spruce up the parks around town. So, and we have the different trailer specifications that we're looking for. Nothing big, something that we can still maneuver around in Bisbee, and not have a problem, so.
Questions? I will say, I've seen some of their pickup trucks overwhelmed with branches and stuff, as they trim trees and bushes and everything else, and they're trying to rope it all down. So hopefully, this would make it a lot easier, or keep the parks in a much better shape. I don't exactly where they put all the grass clippings, but.
They usually go, man, or shop, or I'll ask the old movies.
They don't need a dump trailer for grass, for grass. Any other questions, comments?
How often do you use this? I mean, is this like, I mean, twice, three times a month? How often, what's?
This is daily.
Daily?
Daily.
So you, instead of using the trucks to pick up, you'll be using this?
Yes.
Well, you find that, is there a financial benefit to having the dump truck? Or just the time that's involved?
The financial benefit of, well, I guess not financial, because we're paying them no matter what. I mean, we're still paying them. But it does, it does give them the opportunity to, that will save time to be able to, and the resources to be able to do more things and more efficiently.
A lot of piece of equipment to make things go easier and not so hard on, and.
Yeah, the Parks Department is the one department that has very little equipment. And so, this will, they have all their, you know, mowers, that, because this has ramps, that they can put the riding lawnmower in, and they can put all their equipment in there as well, so. They're used for that as well.
It'll be more efficient.
Yep. Time's money.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Alright. Motion?
I move to approve the request for proposal for the purchase of a 10-foot dump trailer for the Parks Department. Second.
We have a motion and a second for item seven, to approve the purchase of a 10-foot dump trailer for the Parks Department. This will be an amount of $12,000. Roll call, please, Councilmembers.
Councilmember Hill? Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Item number eight. This is discussion of possible approval of the Service Agreement and Implementation of the HR Performance. Oh, I'm sorry, move to number five. Here we go, act eight, discussion of possible approval to have Means Building LLC complete specialty restoration of the historic adobe structure work on Camp Naco Hospital building, work to be.
Sole.
Do.
Sole source.
Sole source.
Sole source, okay.
Sole source under city code 3.5.8C.
It's a new procurement method.
Yeah, you know.
Well, you do all out the money, okay?
I read that, but didn't think anything was wrong.
No, I didn't.
Mine has an S, so that's weird.
Well, I typed it.
Oh, it's on each other.
Alright, go ahead, Matt.
Alright, so the hospital building at Camp Naco, which some of you are familiar with, has a section about 30 feet roughly that is failing. There's historic-built trusses that were built by hand, these trusses, and the associated rafter and ceiling joints. And these also are, also sit on adobe walls. So, and so the Means Building LLC Company is, does this for a living. They do, they go all over the state and do restoration work like this. So it's very special and specific work that we don't want. We can't just have any contractor go in there and just throw stuff around and get stuff, and, and it not be how it needs to be. So, yeah, so it's a sole sourced, which this is supported by the city code 3.5.8C.
Any questions? Any questions? Go ahead.
So the $10,400 is gonna cost, that's the total cost?
Yes. That's what we were.
And that's what the labor, material, and just?
Yes.
Should be out of the ARPA funds?
Yes.
Yes, we identified last year, $50,000 for Camp Naco in ARPA funds, and so this is coming out of that $50,000 allocation. I might just add a couple things. The good, the good news is that Mr. Means has a crew working in Tombstone right now on the Shefflin Building, which is also an adobe structure, a big one. And so that gives us the opportunity to get him in here more quickly. The bad news is, is that we really wanted him here before the rain started. Because, as you know, well, we all know what adobe's made of. And the less, the less water it filtrates, the better. So it's not too soon, we've been trying to get Mr. Means down here pretty much all year. And this is the first he's been available.
How long will it take, do you know? Did he give you an idea?
I think he said like, two weeks possibly, at most. Doing a new work for one week, and I think get most of it done, then they might have to come out. I can't remember, I don't have that. We took one month. Okay.
Just as a side note, we have some good work going on, and we may receive additional funding for this in the end. And so, we're working hard on that in several fronts, so maybe we won't have to do the full, to ourselves, but this is at least something to help stabilize it. Alright, any questions or, entertain a motion?
I move to approve to have Means Building LLC complete specialty restoration of historic adobe structures work on the Camp Naco Hospital building, work to be sole sourced under city code 3.5.8 subsection C.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item eight, to approve adobe structure work on Camp Naco. For $10,400. Roll call, ladies, thanks.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Well, now we'll move on to item. Well, you know, I've been, discussion of possible approval of the Service Agreement and Implementation. Implementation of the HR Performance Solutions. Go ahead, Joel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm, tonight, I'm moving to approve, no, I'm discussing and presenting the Service Agreement and Implementation with HR Performance Solutions. During the budget meetings for fiscal year '23, I discussed the NeoGov management suite. It was presented for the same purpose, performance management and the learning platform. The initial quote from NeoGov was for a three-year service contract, and that total was for $65,000. And year one was $27,000 plus, year two, $19,000 plus, and year three, $19,000 plus. At Council's direction, I went back to NeoGov to get those additional questions answered in regards to whether or not the data is still, you know, belonging to the city, et cetera. And in that conversation, I then received another quote. This one was dated May 2nd, and there were significant discounts applied. Year one was $12,000, year two, $13,000, excuse me, year two, $13,000, year three, $19,000. That, that variable of cost gave me some concern. We have, I have to be fiscally responsible, we have to be fiscally responsible. And while I definitely like this service, I believe that this will benefit our city employees, retention, so many things. This contract, when I met with the representative, we went through looking at the courses, which there's over 500 courses available, that list is included, and also very similar services with that performance management. I had mentioned that when we were discussing kind of costs, and what it was per person, I had just mentioned that, at the time, I had thought that $5,000 was our limit to go out for RFQ. And I was incorrect, but she, it was very close to that number if we moved forward with just our full-time employees. So for 75 seats in this software, there was a minor discount. I don't even think it was over $2,000, it was a pretty minor discount. And then, it gives us the opportunity to use this, this service, this product, for a year, for our full-time employees. And then, moving forward, should we like it, should we feel it's something that we would like to move forward with for our part-time employees as well, and then maybe at that time, looking into a multi-year contract. But again, I felt much more comfortable knowing that that number was more reasonable for what we're dealing with, that it also gives us the services that I was really wanting to see, which is that learning center, which meets a lot of the standards. Public Works Department was very excited to see the OSHA different trainings that are on there. Obviously includes sexual harassment and those annual ones that you should have, as well as management, leaderships. I mean, it was a good variety. And so, I, I was really pleased and glad that I, you know, took the direction from Council, and kind of saw what other options were out there, because I feel like I found something that would fit better for our city.
So you, Council, sometimes does a good job, question?
Yes. I never said otherwise.
Yeah, I remember saying that.
Isn't there something about that?
Don't break your heart.
I know, I know, I know. So you're saying now, it's $4,900, now we can do this, like a trial, and see how well it does? For $4,999?
Yes, for one year.
For one year, and once it will go from here?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Now, you're talking my head numbers.
What's that for 75 people?
Right, that's pretty good.
Get out your. Sure.
Joel, why is there an additional $66 for the license? Shouldn't that be included?
Let's just simply add the additional 175.
Thank you. So if we needed to say, add another five employees, it would be $66 per employee. Should we need to go over that 75?
Okay, so it's not part of the initial, okay.
It's just our option if we wanted to, you know, add more, if we needed, you know, if we hired more full-time employees.
I just thought it was weird that they added additional.
In all case, we want to add council members.
And then, put a look.
We're beyond. There are 500 courses.
I know.
Put your board down at the, down at the shop.
So let's just plan on that additional 66. Thank you, Mel.
You're welcome.
Alright, well, then I'm gonna let Mel make the motion on this one.
Let me go back, yeah. You have it here, okay. Okay, I move to approve the Service Agreement and Implementation with HR Performance Solutions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item number nine, approve the Service Agreement. Implementation of HR Performance Solutions, undefined current, so we'll do, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Chair says the ayes have it, so move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright. So, move on to item number 10. This will be discussion of possible approval to hire Arizona Pumped Resources LLC to clean and document the findings of the WAS vault, number one. Do we have a number two?
Yes, we do.
Go ahead.
There are two vaults. So, these WAS vaults, which. I'll remember it later, okay. They are located underneath the belt press and house the sludge, um, that is removed from the rest of the liquid uh, water or, and whatever else.
That was good, whatever.
Well, you can come down to the plane. Vaults have never been inspected, uh, since construction in two thousand six and, and it's pretty imperative that we get these inspected, because, um, with, uh, these, the gases with slut, with, um, sludge and everything, uh, it, it, it can deteriorate the concrete, so we wanna have these inspected, um, so that we can, you know, not, so we don't have potential catastrophic, uh, structural failures to these vaults, um, because the vault, the belt press above it is very, very heavy, so. Um, the inspection will give us the data, we need to tell how bad the condition they are and then if we need, if that one's bad, then probably the number two is bad and then this is just to inspect, clean them, uh, and inspect them and tell us what their findings are. So, it's not a cheap business.
Well, at least we find space, but.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, just to add to Matt's presentation a little bit, um, the, uh, wastewater treatment plant, uh, has a lot of duplicity, which is to say, uh, there's almost everything comes in tubes. Uh, the only thing, there's two things that don't come in tubes, one is where the stuff comes in and the other is where the stuff goes out, uh, which that would be the belt press. So, um, uh, because everything is, has been built in tubes, that way we can maintain the operation of the plant while we empty out that chamber, uh, and clean it and inspect it and make repairs if we need to. But, uh, you know, as, as Matt indicated, uh, this will do, uh, the cleaning and inspection part. Uh, if we find that the concrete has, uh, eroded or chipped or cracked or anything, then we'll have to do some remedial action. Uh, in your budget every year, you budget an amount of money, um, that goes for these kinds of repairs. And, uh, so that's where the thirty-six thousand dollars is coming from, thirty-seven really. And as you can see, the balance, uh, in that, in that line item is about ten thousand dollars and that's between about the end of the month. So, um, so we are, um, we are planning in advance for these kinds of things to be done and, uh, this is something that, um, the, uh, the people who run the plant, uh, have been asking us to do since May, so we're, uh, we're gonna get around to doing it before the end of the year. Hopefully, I mean, it'll be interesting because, well, as far as I know, this will be the first major, uh, emptying of a vessel that we've done for purposes of inspection in seventeen years that plant's been a business. So it's gonna be interesting to see if there's been any deterioration in how much.
Can I ask a question, which would be?
Drew, mayor.
I know, but. I guess what I'm thinking is we empty it, they inspect it, we find out there's a problem, we don't wanna start using it again, because then we gotta go through emptying and, and to get somebody down it, can we have somebody that we know is gonna be able to come in and fix stuff? I mean, I know we'll operate it, but, um, do we have to?
That's the business of Jacobs is it.
What, what, repairing it, you mean?
Or finding the contractors.
I'm just thinking if it's thirty-six thousand, just empty it and inspect it, I don't wanna pay thirty-six again to empty it so they can start working it.
It's gonna be a game time decision. And so, now, keeping in mind that our average daily flow through that plant is about two hundred to two hundred fifty thousand gallons and our peak capacity is one point two million gallons, we should be able to operate on one side.
Yeah.
Okay, well, just.
On a good monsoon day, we see five hundred to six hundred.
Right.
That, six hundred with taxes.
But not a lot comes out of the press there, the press is more about tapes and toilet paper and all that. That's just water.
Yeah.
And others.
It's a deep water.
It'll, it'll come up, it'll come down to whether they can.
Work it in that.
Work it in with another company to be in there.
Well, maybe talk to Jacobs and say be ready if it's something bad, I hate to pay now thirty-six thousand to get down into.
Well, then we'll have to bring this back to council as well.
Well, we can do a special, then I'll do it for them, we can save thirty-six grand. It's nice out there, it's nothing but a money game.
So this is not part of Jacobs, I mean, that's not part of their.
No, it's not part of the base contract and, and it specifically stipulates in the contract that there will be these monies set aside for these kinds of repairs. So if you look at the, at the contract we have with them, it's, it's very specific in how we do it.
It's our responsibility.
Yeah, it's our plant, they manage it, they let us know what needs to be.
We will pay for everything.
It's like a rental, you know, they run it, but we own the property. We have to fix it, we have to.
They get the garbage.
That's a good deal.
Okay, uh, more questions, comments? Drew, do you wanna make the motion on?
Okay, I move to approve to hire, I move to approve to hire Arizona Pumped Resources LLC to clean and document the findings in, uh, in a small number one.
Second.
We have a motion of second five ten to approve Arizona Pumped Resources to clean and document vault number one. Roll call please.
Councilmember Hill? Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, here we go.
We're gonna have to separate.
We're slowly degrading, but we only have one more to go, because, here we go, let's go number eleven and. This is, uh, rejecting all bids received on June second, twenty twenty-two for construction of City Hall. This is City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is a really, really disappointing agenda item, uh, for, I think, all of us and, uh, I, certainly this was not something that I anticipated doing, but, um, as a result of, um, analysis of particularly the lowest responsive bidder, um, and some discussions with them in terms of, uh, how we could, uh, reduce costs in the bid by doing a few things differently, um, we were not able to reach, um, our, our target figure, um, which was about three point four million dollars, that was, my budget was three point two, but my target was three point four. I just didn't tell them. As you know, the lowest responsive bid was four point one million dollars, uh, and after going back and forth over a two-week period in discussions, uh, with the, uh, with the contractor, uh, with the architect, the city attorney, myself, um, we, we concluded that, uh, the lowest responsive bid could not be better than three point nine million dollars. I still think that there is an opportunity to do this within our budget. And so, uh, in order to move forward with those discussions, um, we need to reject all of these bids so that we can essentially start over. The architect, the city attorney and I, and the mayor, uh, have already discussed several possible options. Joe's gonna go back, uh, and determine, uh, how much that is, you know, because unfortunately, there's a big difference between what the public sector can do on an construction project versus what the private sector can do. Private sector has all kinds of latitude that we just don't. Um, and so that makes our job doing the same thing a lot more difficult. So Joe's gonna be checking s- some alternative methods, their applicability to doing it in the public sector, um, and, uh, talking with, um, the, uh, the regulators and, uh, and some of our expert, uh, uh, resources at the Arizona League of Cities, uh, to determine what options we do have and how we can go about it. So that's gonna take a little time, um, I mean, uh, nobody regrets saying that more than I do at this point. You know, we, we had such high hopes to do something, uh, with that property and restore it to its former glory and I still believe, uh, that we can do that, uh, we just don't wanna do it this way. And so, um, and I think that, you know, uh, in, in the current, uh, climate of everything going up every day, uh, and, and not by small amounts, um, I think that some of us doing, making these kind of moves should send a message out there to, uh, contractors who are quite frankly telling you that something costs, uh, ten shekels, uh, in, in, in April and thirty shekels in May and fifty shekels in June, uh, you know, I'm sorry. We've all been around a long time and we've never seen that kind of increase in prices. That slightly exceeds the current rate of inflation. Dare I say that.
Three times.
A little gouge going on.
Lot of gouges.
And so, uh, I don't think, I think it's our duty not to allow, uh, the taxpayers to be taken in that fashion and so we're gonna, uh, you know, we got a good plan, okay? Uh, the, the plan is sound, we can build a building with the plans we got, uh, that part is all, uh, put to bed at this point. The challenge at this point will be finding the right situation that will allow us to move forward following city rules at the same time. So that's where we're at, uh, no action is required, well, wait a minute.
Yeah.
You need to make a motion, I'm sorry.
And the other thing we're gonna add to this is that directing staff to look into other.
Options.
Other options.
Yeah.
So give them the ability to do so.
And if I may say, I agree, I mean, to comment on this, I think it's not the right time and I believe, uh, I foresee that prices will have no choice but to come because of their attraction, because of, of what we expect in recession. So these guys will be looking for, forward in the near future and I think probably we just have to be patient. So I'm, I'm all for this, I mean.
Yeah, we wanted to do the best we could and move it along, but, you know, it's situations as they are, so we'll just, um, take.
I know how bad you all gonna feel if this extends my retirement.
I'm sorry, I'm not bringing you back and forth though.
Done.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, uh, so I'm gonna make the motion, uh, I move to reject all bids received June one, on June one, twenty twenty-two for the construction of City Hall and direct staff to look into the other types of procedures for the project at this time.
I second.
I have a motion and a second for item eleven to reject all bids from our June first, uh, City Hall building. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who's nay, determines the ayes have it, so move. Uh, last item will be anything City Manager's report.
Nothing specific tonight, just to, uh, remind everyone that over the next couple of weeks, uh, there will be a lot to celebrate and, uh, you know, certainly our independence is one of them and, uh, we do have a full slate of activities, uh, just like the old days. And, uh, thank God for the rain, because that just makes, uh, celebrating, uh, with things that explode a lot more safe. But, uh, please, please do, uh, the, the coaster race starts, uh, eight, eight AM on July fourth and, uh, we're, we're all very happy to see that event, uh, coming back in, we're getting a lot of support from, uh, area organizations and, uh, also contractors who are, uh, supplying us with safe equipment so that, uh, the race is safe, uh, from the upper interchange all the way down to, uh, the library and, uh, uh, it's been heartening to, uh, watch everybody, uh, actually double down on, um, uh, just getting, having an opportunity to have a good old-fashioned busy Fourth of July, so, uh, and knowing that the next council meeting is after Independence Day, I wore the tie early. That's all I have for you.
All right, um, gee, Frank's not here, somebody else gonna make the motion?
I move to be a turn.
We have a motion and a second for it's here and all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who's nay, we are here.